Good evening. Welcome to the Peters Township Council meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2025. Mr. Auger, please call.
Mr. Carter will not be here.
I'm here.
Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Spigot.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Okay, all right. We're going to leave this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, first item on the agenda is special reports, which we have none. Let's move into meeting minutes for the last council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
You mentioned a second, any corrections? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, six nothing. Next item will be audience comments, which will be an opportunity for any member of the audience to address council on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address council this time? Okay, see now we'll move into, it's like there's no unfinished business, so first item under new business will be a proclamation declaring the week of April 6th to 12th is National Library Week in the township, so Paul, I'll turn it to you.
Sure. This year's theme for National Library Week is drawn to the library, and few public libraries do more to draw in community members to a library than the staff and volunteers of the Peters Township Public Library. In 2024, the library welcomed 120,000 patrons to its doors and circulated almost 300,000 items. The past year, more than 23,000 community members attended library programs, library staffs assigned 3,700 patrons into study rooms, checked out more than 900 seed packets, and created library cards for 1,800 new patrons. Residents are drawn to our library for a variety of reasons. For some, it's the literary offerings; for many, it's the creative programming; for others, it's a chance to gather and share ideas. But everyone is there because of the hard work of our professional staff and the volunteers who support their efforts. And so it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council declare April 6th through the 12th National Library Week in Peters Township.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, we listen on a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we have a proclamation here, I don't know, should I read this or?
Oh, you can, you can if you want, or I think Lacey has a couple things she'd like to.
Yeah, I figured she looked like she wanted to talk.
I'm here, I'm in front of the microphone, yeah.
If I could give this to you now.
Sure.
Can I knock it out of the corner, so I apologize?
I just wanted to say thank you to council for continuing to support the library and continuing to recognize that it's such a valuable asset to our residents. Paul mentioned a bunch of really great numbers about the library from last year. We had a 26% increase in program attendance across all age groups, and we had a 35% increase in summer reading participation last year. And the fact that we've really been able to grow our programs and services year over year is a credit to the talented staff that we have over at the library. So I would encourage you guys to stop by for National Library Week or anytime, especially on Tuesday, April 8th. That's National Library Workers' Day, so kind of all of our team's contributions will be recognized on Tuesday. To celebrate National Library Week, we're going to be trying some new things this year, listed on the handout that I gave you. So we'll be doing a social media campaign with prizes to increase engagement on our Facebook page. We'll be doing a spirit week for staff and patrons, and we'll have a full lineup of more than 20 programs that week. So we'll have seven storytimes, a poetry reading at Monday's Brewing offsite, our ever-popular puzzle swap, which will probably have 80 people lined up outside the front of the library before we even open, and a reception for the winners of our teen and tween writing contest. This is the third year that we've done that, and I think we got about 20 entries this year, from 4th grade through 12th grade writing contest entries. So should be a really full week, and I would love to see you guys there, and thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you.
Any questions about anything library-related?
Does the library offer any scholarships to graduating high school students? I just have one graduating, she's looking for scholarships and stuff, not my personal thing, but I think it might be. But I'm just thinking, like, if you can get more involvement, we've always talked about, you know, the teens or the pre-teens getting there, so if they are active in the library and, you know, they continue to do that, you know, at the end of their tenure of high school, if there is some type of scholarship available, if they can, if we're showing that they utilize the library to continue to grow in that aspect, it might be something that.
Yeah, so we do have a really great group of teens that volunteer pretty regularly at the library, and usually those volunteers, when they turn 16, if they're interested in working with the library, will bring them on as pages to shelve new materials. And then we also have a really great summer internship program that we actually just put out a job offer for, so it's the fourth summer we'll be doing that internship, and we look for, like, education majors, library science majors, and they come on board to help with our summer reading program and to work with the kids. So we do do some things, but yeah, no scholarships available at this point.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anything else?
Is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item will be to accept the resignation of John Barnes from the youth commission.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Barnes's resignation with regrets and thank him for his service.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, six nothing. Do we have anybody sitting in the queue for that position or do we need to interview? Do we have enough?
We have a couple applications, and I'm not quite sure when they're going to close. Tom will be, Tom's actually on leave right now. He'll be back next week, and we'll probably have somebody in front of council at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Next item will be accepting the resignation of George Ross from the Environmental Quality Board.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Ross's resignation with regrets, thank him for his brief but spirited service to the Environmental Quality Board.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second there. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Six nothing on that one. Appointment of a member to replace Mr. Ross on the Environmental Quality Board. I think we had one gentleman that we had previously interviewed.
And Mr. Rossi. And we have contacted him, he's still interested.
All right, well, after the interviews that we had co-chaired, I guess, with him, I would nominate Drew Rossi for a term that expires January 1st, 2029. That's scary, guys.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second on that appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That'll be six nothing. Item will be award of a contract for the purchase of police department vehicles under the CoStar Cooperative Purchasing Program. Looks like we have pricing on that, it's under budget. Laurel Auto Group, I believe, is the.
Chief, how are the Tahos working out now?
They're fantastic, sir.
Are they better than the previous cars were?
I wouldn't say they're better, but they are different. They're larger. I really like them.
But that isn't, that's not what you're voting on tonight.
No, we're not, no.
This car is going to be used as an unmarked car, and the chief and I talked about it, and his preference is to purchase a Ford for this, for this application.
We're looking for an unmarked. Wanted to kind of blend in a little bit with some aggressive driving issues and things like that that we'd like to be able to attack.
Okay, so it's a 2025 Ford.
Ford and interceptor.
Yeah, it's an Explorer.
My coffee and paste.
Okay, all right, okay, that's sorry. That was me reading too fast.
Oh man, that's a pretty good deal.
A Ford Tahoe.
She's talking about aggressive driving issues. My wife comes to my mind. Yeah, we, so the one that we've quoted in here is going to be gray, dark gray in color, just like every other.
Yeah, I was gonna say, getting boring.
So we're hoping to be able to blend in a little bit with it and maybe do some good, so.
We got a red one, the fire department would like it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award the contract under the CoStar's program for the purchase of a 2025 Ford interceptor, four-wheel drive for use by the Peters Township Police Department to Laurel Auto Group in the amount of $47,835.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Well, we can, I have a question for the chief before he steps down, but we could finish this part.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Six nothing.
I didn't know if you saw my text, I don't know if you got it. Did you hear anything about, like, at the high school, a strange man?
Yes, we have investigated that extensively.
Okay.
Yes, so the picture that was going around was taken from a very long distance, zoomed in, screenshotted, zoomed in again, screenshotted, and it's pixelated. He wasn't wearing a mask, there was no, there was no threat. He was there waiting for his girlfriend, and he has, as far as our understanding, moved to Florida in the last weekend, so not, not in any way a threat at all, so, but yes, yeah, no problem. Anything else?
Thanks, chief.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item will be award for a contract for network hardware and software under CoStar's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So the 2025 budget includes an appropriation of $185,000 to cover costs related to licensing for various computer software applications, and a portion of that is associated with a license for the network software that you're taking action on tonight. We meet with AEC every fall to talk about what needs to be done in terms of support of the network. At the time, all that was required was the renewal of this license. As we get ready to issue that contract to purchase that, what we had been told by Neutonics is that the hardware on which that, that software resides is no longer going to be supported, and therefore we need to buy a new piece of hardware. That is not in the budget. It costs $34,000 approximately. I think we can find that from savings from, from other purchases that we have. You really don't have a lot of leeway here because this hardware and software is the backbone upon which all of our applications run. So it's going to be my recommendation that council awards a contract to the AEC group in the amount of $58,163.43 for the purchase and installation of Neutonics hardware and software.
So moved.
Second.
And what part of this is not in the budget, the $34,000?
The $34,000.
So we had 185,000 total budget for.
For licenses of various products.
Okay.
So it's everything from our accounting and payroll software to software inside the police department to the planning software.
Okay, so it went from, we were assuming about $16,000 for the Neutonics.
Right.
Up to $58,000. And I guess there's no way around that with a different type of network solution?
No.
Any further discussion? I don't know anything about this, so it's.
Did we vote?
No, not yet. Is, is there any?
Is there any way in the future to avoid something like this, or this is just something they decide not to support?
This is something they decided not to support in the last couple months, and like I say, one of the things we tried to do is to sit down every fall with AEC to develop the budget for the following year, so I think we did our due diligence, it's just that, in that interim period.
And is this a common occurrence with the AEC?
No.
Or is this a?
No.
Well, AEC, they're not really selling this, though, they're, they're.
They're, they're, they're going to do the installation of it, so this is all being done under a CoStar's contract, so with, that AEC has, so all of this is being purchased then.
All right, so, so we're not going to get a better price on this than on this one, since it's CoStar's? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That carries six nothing. Next item will be award of a contract for outdoor furnishings of the aquatic center for the CoStar's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
And this total cost will be reimbursed through a grant.
So zero out-of-pocket from the township for all this.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the award of a contract to Yucca Playground and Fitness under the CoStar's program for the purchase of outdoor furnishings in the amount of $50,248.50.
Second.
Good question. So is that what this stuff's gonna look like? I mean, or is it gonna?
It's gonna be our red.
Okay, that's what I was just making sure.
No, this would just catalog cuts.
Okay, so it's gonna go.
We knew better not to order red.
Okay.
Somebody make a move?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next will be resolution setting fees for Rolling Hills Aquatic Park.
So council needs by resolution to set the fees for the aquatic park. We had provided you a, previously, a memory in them with regard to how we see this fee structure working. You know, we, I think we're fairly confident that if you had a full season, that the cost of running that, that aquatic park is about $72,000, and that's based upon discussions that Dave has had with Pine Township where there's a splash pad that's a little bit smaller, but heavily used in that community. We think that these fees, because one of the things we heard clearly when we've been talking about the pool and everything, we're at the aquatic center, is that those who support it and those who, who do not, everyone's in agreement that the fees should cover the cost of operation. We think if we set the fees at this level, that in fact, that's what will happen. There's no way to know that for sure until we get some experience at the, at the aqua park. And so once the season's done, I think we need to go revisit this to make sure that they, they make sense in terms of whether they're generating sufficient money. I can tell you this, you know, they, the total cost of 72,000, it's gonna be offset. How much it's gonna be offset is, will be determined, but even at, even if it was not offset at all, the township certainly can afford to operate that aqua park, so.
How does it compare to Bethel Park's state?
Hello. So we reached out to Bethel Park, Pine Township. Bethel Park, they charge a, a $5 fee for non-residents, and their annual fee is $50 for residents compared to what our, ours will be at 25. Talking to some people at Bethel Park, they may make an adjustment to that, they've got a lot of complaints, and 50 was pretty high for their annual, annual rate, so they might, they might bring that back a little bit, so.
Their cost of operation will be entirely different than ours because this system that we use is what they use up at Pine, where the water's treated and recirculated. In Bethel Park, every time that splash pad's activated, it's fresh water coming out of the public water system, so.
What's their fee for a resident to use it one time?
Their fee for resident is, I believe, is $3 and $5 for non-resident.
And the way our grants requirements, because you have state money in this, the non-resident fee, the most it can be is double that of which a residence pays.
Remind me, are we gonna be food or vending there?
Just vending machines?
Vending.
Yes.
All right, can I pose a motion to adopt Resolution Number 030225, establishing fees for Rolling Hills Aqua Park?
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Further discussion?
These fees, if they're renting a shelter or party room, does that also count for the splash pad utilization?
Yes.
You get to bring 30 guests.
You get 30 passes with that.
Okay, so that's included?
Yes.
Those are, I saw they're two-hour windows, so could somebody book two windows, I guess, and get a four-hour party out of it, or?
Well, we're not, well, yeah, in terms of the, the rental of the shelters, yes, you could.
Four hours of the splash pad, it's a long time.
That's a long time.
With a bunch of munchkins.
Yeah, that's true.
They actually, Pine, because of the pandemic, went to two-hour sessions, and what was one of their comments was, that's how long people stay. You know, to stay for two hours is a long time with, with young children.
Yeah, you want to get the kids out of there.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, six nothing on that one.
Thanks.
Look at that again, probably this time next year.
Yes.
No, Mr. Brooks, I neglected, last, last council meeting, I neglected to address how wonderful a job you guys again did on the Princess Park. Thank you, it was wonderful. I apologize for not bringing that up at the last meeting.
But, you know, how, how many people were at the Princess Park?
We had, we had about 10 no-shows due to illness, but we, we capped it at 350 this year.
Wow.
So it's a number that was doubled from when I first started. This is the second year that we're using the entire gym space.
But as impressive as that is, I think the other thing that's impressive, they, they also had an event for, for moms and, and sons.
Yeah, we had a glow night for mother-sons in the past, it was an event that really didn't take off the ground this year. We did as a glow night, we did more activities than sit down and just DJ, you know, boys are a little different, so we had 176 attend that event, so that's something we want to keep, keep growing, so we're really happy about that. And staff did a phenomenal job with both events, so want to make sure they get, they get the credit for that, they, they did a great job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be authorization to the appropriate township officials to execute an easement agreement with Robinson Land Company related to the Timberlake Residential Development, we've talked about a few months ago.
Actually, I was looking at this, we talked about it exactly a year ago, it's been taking this long to get this resolved. If you will recall, the ownership of a small strip of land in the Timberlake Development was shown to be owned by the township, the intention always was that the homeowners' association would own that, and that the township would have the ability to allow access across that property. The thought at the time was that it would be possible then to have a connection down to McCombs Road. So this, this is a plan that's currently been submitted, there are some issues with that, that plan, but we'd like to move ahead with this, this easement regardless, so that in fact, not only this piece of property, but a piece of property in the front end of the plan can be transferred appropriately to the homeowners' association. So what, what Mr. Smith has been able to do is to determine that Mr. Robinson, the son of the developer, actually, the legal entity still exists, and he's in a position to be able to sign for that legal entity. So what this does is creates that easement across that property.
And remember, that, that easement is in your pure discretion, so you'd never have to use it.
This is just something that should have happened 30 years ago.
This is something that, yeah, it should have happened 30 years ago, and this doesn't, it doesn't get to the end of it, because there's more that needs to be done, but this is a step in the right direction, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize to execute an easement agreement with Robinson Land Company related to Timberlake Residential Development.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. That's six nothing. And the final item under new business will be professional services contract relating to the new comprehensive plan. We met with three consultants last Monday, interviewed all three of them, all the budget numbers, all the costs are rated, the budget number. Does anybody want to make a motion on any of this?
If I could, you know, one of the things that I told you that I would do is to sit down with the people from Strategic Solution and try to get an understanding of why there's such a difference between the number of hours that they had programmed to do the comprehensive plan and that which HRG did. And what, what we discovered was a couple things. One, because they're using Gateway Engineers, a third party, for their engineering services, they did not assign hours to them, and they've gone back and done that. And the same is true for their market study. The other thing that we discovered was, there was a, on their spreadsheet, they, they made a, a simple error that resulted in a big change when you looked at the number of hours. So as of right now, Strategic Solution is talking about assigning 641 hours to this, which matches up with the 574 at HRG. I will say this, we, we worked with Mr. Trent before, he, he's, he's the consummate professional, he knows this material well, he's a very practical individual, and, and when we sat there, I was suggesting that we go with HRG because of the difference in commitment of time, but having reconciled this, it's not only my opinion, but Mr. Holdren's and Kyle's opinion that the township would best be served by issuing a contract to Strategic Solutions.
Originally, it said less than, you know, like, 290-some hours? How did it get up to greater than?
Well, because if you go with, on your, your desk, if you go to Gateway Engineers, if you take that $17,000, in his initial submittal, they did not assign hours to that. He's now assigned 136 hours there. And on the market allowance, he did not assign any time, and he's now assigned 50 hours. And in this first bracket, this first section here, this bottom, this bottom line didn't want to add a cross, so this, this went up dramatically to, to get to 114 hours, and that's, that's what the difference is.
Thank you.
Well, I don't like the sloppy proposal, but.
And normally, Mr. Lewis, I would be in total agree with you, in fact, that's one of the discussions I want to have with Mr. Trent, but I could tell you, based upon the work product I've seen from him when he was here, I, I have no problem recommending.
Well, I was an advocate after the interviews for him, but that's not good business. All right, somebody needs this.
I'm not a big fan of the fact that we had to go back to the guy and tell him to fix something that they should have gone through with a fine-tooth comb the first time around.
Well, I was for HRG from the beginning, so I'm gonna make a motion that we award the contract to HRG.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five, zero, one.
I wasn't at the presentation.
Five, no, we got a nay out of me.
Oh, we did get a nay?
You didn't ask for a nays.
Yeah, I interrupted, sorry.
Thanks. That would be four, one, one.
I think that's a mistake, guys.
Okay, payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills, I found them to be in order, I move they be approved and submitted.
Second.
Give a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. That's six nothing. Not seen any correspondence on the docket?
No.
Is there anything under reports that anybody would like to discuss?
Just, I witnessed a pretty bad accident in Gallerian Water last week. Someone was flown from the scene. Really, I guess we should have asked chief while he was here, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know, that has not come to my office, I can't.
And then any update when people will start moving into that new complex there, just because that might, it's gonna get worse.
Well, in theory, they have leases for April 1st, we're still working with them because they've yet to have been able to satisfy us in terms of occupancy there. They, and they ought to be able to do it, but what they're, what's got them hung up is they need communication between their alarm systems and where they get monitored, and right now they do not have a high-speed data connection to a lot of their curse, and we're hoping that that occurs, because if it doesn't, they will not be in the building on April 1st.
Speaking of high-speed internet and stuff like that, is there something going on in the township? I just feel like the internet service has changed, a lot of dead spots, more than before.
You're talking cellular coverage?
Yeah.
Well, funny you should mention it. So.
Was this a setup?
I don't know whether it was or not.
I'm real annoyed, sir.
Yeah, so, and this is only by chance AT&amp;T's back, back to us, I'm not quite sure what the motivation is at this point in time, but, so down at Fire Station 3, we talked about this before, they want to come in and put in a 60-foot telephone pole, they would remove They would remove that telephone pole on the right and replace it, and then on top of it, there would be these two antennas that you see here. This would be routed back into the fire station, and they would have a rack that would be in our building to handle the electronics. The thing about this is that, as explained to me, if you've gone down East Montgomery Road and you see those telephone poles that have those canisters on top, this has much wider coverage. It has the, it covers an area that would take five or six of those small cells to do. And what it will do is provide 5G service down in that area of the township. So the thing that's different about this is, is that it isn't just the being permitted to put up the tower. It's us to be willing to approve a lease, the place that, there, and have that equipment in our building. I think it's to our interest. I don't think it's any uglier than the transformers next to, that'll be sitting next to it. And so I don't think it's going to degrade the appearance down there, and I do believe this is a way to address that problem. We're going to have to negotiate that lease. I don't know what the terms that they're going to be offering, but I think this is something we ought to do.
Is there any chance they can make one of those towers that looks like a tree?
Yes. Well, this is only a...
I agree. Any tower that goes up should be like that. We should have had that in the park.
We drove through there last week, and my youngest was like, Daddy, why aren't the towers in Peters Township like that?
Well, because I don't think they have the effect that you're thinking they have because there are no sequoias in southwestern Pennsylvania, and that's how big these things are. There aren't trees this size. But, so I guess my question is, is this something that we should negotiate a lease on?
This is just AT&amp;T, though.
Yeah, look to see Verizon. It is, it's only AT&amp;T, that's who's approached this.
But that shouldn't change this, I mean, that service hasn't changed. As far as, I'm sure we all want Verizon in there to make it better coverage, but that's not fixing this problem right now. They need a current tower to go back up, right? But I mean, I don't want to sketch drawing like we have on the right here. I want a real picture of what it's going to look like to avoid the problem of had a bunch of it drive. I mean...
Well, we should have a process in place now.
Right.
It should eliminate that.
Yeah, there's not going to be wires snagging back and forth up this pole, right?
No, this, in fact, it's a telephone pole, is what they're putting in. They're going to, I mean, it's, I don't know that, we could ask them to give us a picture, but what you're going to see is a telephone pole. It's a 60-foot telephone pole, probably the height of the pole that's there with the transformers on are slightly taller.
And it's a wooden pole or a steel pole?
It's a wooden pole. A wooden telephone.
So that picture right there is not local, but somewhere else?
No, that's the...
That is there.
That's the pole that sits right next to Fire Station 3 right now.
Okay.
That's where the power comes in, and what they're talking about doing is removing that small pole.
Yeah.
Putting in a 60-foot pole and putting that equipment on top.
And so roughly, that pole there is probably about, what, 20 feet? The one they want to take out, 20, 25 feet?
Yeah, maybe 30.
So at least here, the new pole would be roughly twice the size of that pole.
Is that drawn to scale, or those canisters going to be like three times as big when you put them up there? We just need to see a picture of what the service...
Well, let me see if I can get you a picture, because this can't be a unique installation for them. Okay.
No, we just don't want it to stand out too much.
Okay.
And can we go back to...
Well, let's continue on.
Okay.
So this is the tower under a drive. We got in a week and a half ago, an application. The AT&amp;T is on the right-hand side of this tower. AT&amp;T wants to replace their antenna and replace their ground equipment, and the application that came in, that has been withdrawn, that electronic equipment on the bottom has additional coax cable. And what they sent us on the additional application was putting even more cables up this thing. Now, what's happened in the meantime is, Mr. Frizzell, his house is on the, to the right of this, he actually owns the property. He has entered into a lease agreement with them, and what his lease agreement requires is that a pole be placed on the property, and just like they did with the Verizon antenna, is that all that cable lane be run through that pole. And so we haven't seen the application for that yet, or, you said it just came in?
Mm-hmm, today.
So it came in today. So that's what they're showing. We have a policy we need to follow, but I will tell you, just as I told you when they did this, there's an approval process, but you don't have a lot of authority in this area in terms of the aesthetics of this. I actually think a pole with all the cables inside of it's going to be a dramatic improvement the way that appears.
So all that wire is going to come down, then?
All those wires come down, but they'll be inside of a pole. So the poles, in essence, serve as a conduit.
And is it going to go just next to that tower?
It's going to be, the pole on the left-hand side? It's going to be a pole on the right-hand side, right underneath where that antenna is right now.
Well, there's going to be matching poles that'll bounce everything out, right?
And then they'll go in, and the fence that surrounds all their electronic equipment's old and wooden, and they'll all be replaced with a new plastic fence to match what's on the other side. And the final discussion that was brought up by...
This was planned.
What's that?
This was a planned discussion.
It could have been. The final discussion that AT&amp;T wants to have, and quite honestly, I think at this point, we might be better served if in fact, there's interest on the school district's part and on the township's part, to go to a company that does towers. When we looked at this before, all three providers have a problem in this area. And we went, I went up with AT&amp;T to look at this, and there's an area that's between the parking lots at PV and the football field at PV, where there's a path, it looks actually, it looks like, almost like a roadway that's grass, that goes to the top of that hill. It's well away from everyone. It would accommodate a tower that no doubt could have all three providers on it and address the concerns for everybody in that area, because that's what Mr. Lewis can tell you, there is no service bound in that area, so.
Why don't they go over to all those woods the school district owns over there and get it away?
Because they've got to get power to it. And so here's, the challenge is this, one, I don't know whether the school district's interested. I can tell you that if the tower was placed there, this would actually generate quite, I believe, quite a bit of revenue for the school district. The other thing about it is, it's not permitted under our zoning right now. And this is what I told you before, is, you know, as a matter of zoning, we don't have a lot of control where towers, in terms of controlling what towers look like, if they're in an area where they're permitted. But having said that, if you're the leaseholder, you have all kind of control over that tower. So my thought before was, and I still think it makes sense, and the only reason we haven't pursued it is because we have the complaint coming up, is that we should take the publicly-owned property that is of a larger size and allow towers on those properties. And that way, the school, the school district and the municipality would be the leaseholder and have control over what those sites look like.
I agree, Mr. Lauer. I think it makes more sense to have those towers there than to have in somebody's neighborhood.
Yes. Yes. So I guess my question, I got a call into the school district. They're going to talk to the school board about whether they would even consider this, but if they're willing to consider it, are you willing to consider a change in our zoning that would permit it to happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
So, Al, so what was your question?
I'm happy with the conversation going, so we need better service. This is almost four years since I've been here, so.
I want to talk about one last tower, though. This is the tower that we own on Locust Drive. It is the place where emergency radios in Peters Township broadcast from and receive from and are tied back to the county system. So I told you before, Washington County, I think, is moving ahead with a plan that Chief McLachlan and Chief Clover and I believe is appropriate for the county and appropriate for Peters Township. When they, they are in the process of engineering that system, and when they first looked at it, they were looking at renting space on a tower off of Voice Road that's in Upper St. Clair. And they've come back to the township and asked whether or not we would consider allowing them to use this tower. From our perspective, I think it actually services the needs of the township better than being up on Voice Road. The other thing is, I think if we, if we're willing to allow this, it may be that we can bargain for other things to enhance the service inside of Peters Township, and it may well be a revenue stream as well. We have a meeting with the county this Thursday, but, you know, I just want to make sure before we start talking about allowing them access to that tower, that council's okay with that. I'll tell you this, is that if in fact, the county goes ahead and they end up over on Voice Road, for the most part, this tower will be superfluous to the township, because none of, most of the equipment on there will no longer be of any value to the township, so.
At this tower location, there is a ground building also.
Yes.
Would that have to be removed and replaced with something new, or?
No, they would need access to that, just as we have antennas and electronics inside that ground building, they would have the same. So, you know, at the very least, I don't know that we want to give up ownership of it, but I think certainly the county at that point should assume responsibility for all maintenance. One of the things that's always been unique, and I think it's only us in the city of Washington, everywhere else, the emergency radio system, all the equipment and all the towers are either owned or leased by Washington County. We're the only municipality that has spent money on purchasing our own equipment and erecting our own towers.
Goes back to when we did our own dispatching here.
Yes, and when we went to County 911, there were some, the council, who were elected to do that and didn't want to lose the ability to go back to dispatching ourselves if we needed, but that's long gone, and there's no going back to that.
Yeah, he's gone.
So I'll be back in touch, but we're going to, like I said, we're going to start the conversation.
Who would be responsible to assess the structural integrity of that?
The county's doing that right now. They already, Motorola has had someone out to look at it. They need to, they may need to raise it slightly, and there may need to be additional structural supports in that lattice work, so, but they're examining that.
Is there any other report, information that anybody would like to discuss?
Just so you, everybody knows, this is, yeah, this is the condition of the ballfield right now, with the exception of needing sod on the first baseline, that field's ready to go. The first pitch and ribbon cutting is scheduled for Saturday, April 12th at 10:00 a.m.
Who's throwing out the first pitch?
Natalie. And this is the status of the other field as of today. Those pile of stone are the material needed to choke the stone that's been put in place so that, in fact, the turf on this field can be installed.
They were saying this Friday, they're going to start?
Yes.
With the installation, so probably by the end of next week, that'll be done. They have a small section of curb that they need to put in place. That's what the turf gets tacked to, and when that gets in place, that'll allow them to come in and put the sod in the outfield of this field, and that will occur at the same time on the other field, so.
So are we saying that both fields will be done for ribbon cutting April 12th?
No. No, I think, this field, what do you think, a month?
This field will be a lot closer on the April 12th. Just some small touches after that. I think, I think maybe a week or two after that, we'll be closer to...
Okay. So will there be another ribbon cutting for this one, or?
That's what we look to do.
Yeah, well, remember, we're naming this field in honor of Mr. May, so I think we would be doing something in conjunction with the school district to do that, so.
Yeah, I walked the smaller field last week. Looks phenomenal.
Yeah.
Like, just that's what our township needed. I mean, I was just in Ohio over the weekend, my daughter was soccer, and, I mean, there are turf, baseball fields everywhere. I mean, this is what the township needs. The one thing I was a little curious about is, the turf infield seems like it's definitely like a higher elevation than the outfield. I don't know if that's a, like irrigation thing, but, you know, if you're running from that infield to go step in the outfield to catch a ball, it seemed like there was a good step off there. If you want to go then...
The engineer will step.
Right.
As opposed to the ballplayer?
You're not wrong.
I don't know if it would be seen different with this field.
Well, the small field, both of these fields, you know, when they were built 60 years ago, you know, you'd never build a field like that today. You'd grade it properly from the start, but these, if you look at the elevation of like the foul pole on the first baseline versus the foul pole on the third baseline, the whole field's cattywampus, you know? So when Gateway did the design plans, we talked about this, and it's especially prevalent on that small field. Like, if you look from second base to first base, it matches like almost perfectly, and from second to third, there's kind of a hump there. The only way you can correct that is to keep on going all the way into the outfield. And, you know, we had talked when this project was conceived, you know, years ago about, we didn't want to get into replacing the entire field. It was just an infield project at that time, so we looked at that, and we think that we can maybe roll the sod down a bit and make it a little less noticeable.
Yeah, it won't be as noticeable, I think, with the freezing and thawing. We're going to roll that, and we're going to start blending that out a little bit. It's, you see it in a lot of fields, especially with the drainage of fields. You want, you want the fields to drain to the outfield and the gaps in the outfield. So that does fall off a little bit third, but you see it a lot of places.
Yeah, on the third base side, it was definitely more prominent.
Yes.
I mean, this season, no, but maybe next year, do we look to just throw some dirt down and grade it in there?
We talked about that. Maybe like...
Top dressing over time.
Play with it this year, see if there's any major issues, and then, when the season's done in the fall, maybe we start to taper it off a little bit, just to try to fill in that gap, so.
To me, more of a safety issue.
Yeah.
I don't think you're going to see that nearly as much on the big field. But that elevation-wise, there's just so much area in the outfield, we ended up being able to drop that and blend it in a lot better.
Looked phenomenal. It turned out really nice.
Okay, so we talked about the ribbon cutting, ambulance service study. The consult wants to sit and speak with council on April 7th. That'll be at 7:30.
Wait a minute.
And then on May 5th, we have the workshop for the Royal News Base, too.
April 7th. Are you counting on everybody being here?
Well, if you cannot be here, one of the things that they're prepared to do is to interview people at a later date if you need.
I don't want to be here, April 7th.
I will not either, but... I can make it. I'm here. Down two.
I'll be impressed with you. Okay.
Sure, next week after that, you're gone.
Is there anything that anybody would like to have seen on the next agenda? Seeing none?
No. It's not on the next agenda. It's just to make a compliment, all of the effort that went into putting on the high school production this week. Mama mia was spectacular. The kids, you couldn't get enough accolades to talk about the effort that they put in. Even the sound has improved significantly in the auditorium. So congratulations, hats off, and I hope the rest of the council will agree with me. You missed an opportunity to go if you did not get there. Thank you.